Welcome to the January 19th Board of Education meeting for special action and discussion. Please silence and turn off your cell phones and note the locations of the emergency exits. Mrs. Francisco? Oh, I thought we did that next. Okay. Stand for the flag, salute. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. All right, please take a moment of silence for your own intentions. Okay, Mrs. Francisco?
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, public notices this meeting has been sent to board members of all district schools, The Herald News, Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick, and West Milford TV 77, hosted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools.
Roll call. Mr. Stillman?
Here.
Mr. Conklin?
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson? Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Ofchinsky? Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke will be joining us on remote. Thank you. Okay, Superintendent's report. Dr. Anamal.
Yes, good evening, members of the board, members of the public. We'll do a quick Superintendent's report tonight and a more complete one next Tuesday. Just a brief update, our hybrid learning model update. We discussed a few times in the late fall, November, December, about bringing more students back into our buildings, in particular at the elementary levels, in particular at the primary grades at the elementary levels, K to 2. So our principals have been working with their intervention or referral services teams, their child study teams, and their Section 504 teams to do just that. So we did a quick analysis of our elementary schools on Friday, and if you take out, if you tease out the all-virtual students, the families who have selected to do an all-virtual option, we're servicing on an average day about 2/3 of the remaining students at our elementary school. So we're not at 100% yet. I don't think it would be safe to do that with the social distancing requirements of 6 feet in between students and in between students and staff. But we are servicing about 2 out of every 3 non-virtual students at the K to 5 levels right now. And we're doing so in a safe manner with all the desks 6 feet apart. The kids are 6 feet away from each other, 6 feet away from the teacher. So we're happy about that. We will continue to look for ways to make this, make our in-person education more accessible for our students at the elementary level, but also at the middle and high school levels moving forward.
Dr. Anamal, I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any problem with transportation and bringing all these children in? Is there a problem with, do we have enough bus drivers? Do we have enough?
We have enough buses. Our bus, we do have a couple of bus drivers on quarantine now, which forces us to rerun a few routes, which simply means that we will take one group of students, drop them off at the elementary school, Westbrook, Maple Road High School, and then run back out for another route. So the second group of students is showing up late to the school. That's because we're short drivers. When those drivers come back off of quarantine, we will no longer have to rerun those bus routes and everybody will be on their normal bus time, pick-up and drop-off times every day.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, discussion? Ray?
Can I ask something just regarding the buses? I had some comments from a few people today that it was not 20 minutes, it was like 40 to 50 minutes where they were behind with regard to getting them either to school or that we're picking them up again in the afternoon. How long, do you have an estimate of how long?
I'll check, it's going to be for the rest of this week. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, for sure. But you mean how long per day, each day?
How long do you think that this might be a situation for students' parents?
For the rest of this week at a minimum. You know, we could get a notification tomorrow from somebody who says, "I think I've been exposed at home," or "I'm going to get tested." So the number of staff members you have working at any time changes day to day based on positive tests or symptoms or close contact quarantines. So that's a floating number. But we think the students who are on the rerun buses today will be on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. In fact, that was a message that went home via Honeywell to those families. So it's an inconvenience and we understand it's not ideal, but hopefully it's just for the short term.
So it's all the letters that went out today. It said there were two drivers. So how is two drivers affecting this?
Well, there were some close contacts. So you may have had another employee who was too close to a boy and then that person said, "I'm..."
And so through contact tracing?
Contact tracing revealed that, yeah. That's the point of that. So we were doing that probably Sunday, or no, Monday, I guess it was.
Saturday, yeah, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Yeah, so that was our weekend project.
And if I could add, yes, some people would have a 40-minute delay because if they're, especially if they're going from the high school and Macabre, because they have to go out, pick up students, bring them back, then go back out, and then bring them back again. So to Marshall Hill, it's 20 minutes out, 20 minutes back. So that's 40 minutes right there. So, you know, and, you know, you go out 20 minutes and then you have to pick everybody up and bring them back. So it could very well be 40 minutes before they get back.
Thanks, Barbara. I think some of the parents just thought that from getting the Honeywell and getting the information, they didn't, they didn't think it was going to be that long because it didn't seem like it was.
Yeah, well, the 20 minutes, the 20 minutes was a difference in pickup time.
Right.
But then you have to account for the time to get back to the school.
Mrs. Francisco, does that affect instructional time? That 20 minutes, they lose the instruction?
And today was a half a day.
I have a question, too. Would it be helpful for parents who are opting to drive their children to school to let transportation know until, you know, this all gets figured out, we should be driving, but then we want to go back to busking so they're not sitting in front of our items? Stop waiting for us? Would that help escalate anything?
I guess if you're going to do it for a few days, it would be helpful for transportation, but I really can't tell whether or not, I couldn't tell you whether the dispatch is going to be able to make any other accommodations to shorten the time.
In theory, it would shorten the bus route because you wouldn't stop for a student who's not there, who's at school already, so.
Yeah, the hard part is 80 square miles.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, moving on to special reports and correspondence, Barb.
At the next meeting on Tuesday, the 26th, there'll be the December 15th work session and regular minutes and executive session minutes.
Okay, and Mrs. Van Dyke, you said you had no report, correct?
No report.
Okay, thank you.
We just started, you know.
Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given 5 minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment, limited to 5 minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. All members of the public speaking during this public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and to give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Do we have any speakers?
Hi, my name's Ashley Lanive. I'm 114 Green Terrace Way in West Milford, and my children attend Maple Road School. I just have a quick question, which I realize you may not be able to answer right now, but it's in reference to Resolution Number 15 under Personnel. And it looks like Maple Road is gaining a first-grade teacher as of January 25th, and I'm wondering if that's in an effort to bring all first-grade students back into the building 5 days a week.
Okay, we do have an answer for you. That is designed to reduce the, there is one, there were 2 sections of first grade at Maple Road, and one teacher was subsequently, is now a virtual teacher, I believe. So this is done to open up a second section in that class, in that grade, in that school.
So to bring more students into the building?
To lessen the load in the existing classroom as well as potentially bring back other students.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay, Dave, second, please. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Personnel, Student Affairs, Mrs. Stevenson for Special Action. This is what we'll be voting on. Would you read the motion?
I think we're going to, I have one edit to make to the agenda before we adopt the agenda.
Okay. I keep that again, I always do that.
That's, that's okay. So we're going to, I have one edit to make on page 6. Personnel and Student Affairs Resolution Number 7. I'm sorry, Number 17.
On page 6?
On page 6, the top of page 6, it continues. So Linda Begley is, where it says capped, the days, it is 123.5. The unit rate doesn't change and the payment doesn't change. But I should say 123.5 days capped indicated 125, so we know that's going to be wrong. So the amount is correct, the days are going to be amended.
Thank you. Okay. Motion to accept the agenda as presented? Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, Courtney, Personnel, Special Action. This is the section we'll be voting on, please.
I'd like to move Item 1 through 17 under Personnel and Student Affairs.
Second. Okay. Any questions, discussion? Nothing? Okay, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, Operations and Finance for Special Action. Dave?
I'd like to move Item Number 1 under Special Action.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Ray?
So just to clarify, there's no cost for us?
These are live streaming?
Yeah.
Yeah. So parents, we're not allowing spectators this winter for basketball, eventually for wrestling. So parents can livestream the games or matches at home, so we are getting the cameras installed.
And then costs are district anyway?
Correct.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Absolutely.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, and Mrs. Romeo, would you read the resolutions for the workshop discussion?
For education?
Yes.
Sure. I'd like to discuss 1 through 5 in education.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion?
Alex Key, probably what, Number 3 is, please?
Assessment 1 for the CARES Act.
We're applying, I guess, for more of the CARES Act?
Yes, we have our, we have the amount, Barbara, is it 14?
We got an additional allocation of $13,690 or something.
Yeah.
So we have to amend the original grant in order to accept the additional allocation.
Thank you.
That's not per school, that's per the district, $13,000, so.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Personnel, Student Affairs for Workshop and Discussion. Mrs. Stevenson?
I'd like to open discussion for Personnel and Student Affairs, item 1 through...
Endless. Is there any discussion, questions, discussions? Kate?
I mean, I guess my first question is for Dr. McLeod. There's 4 out of the 6, like, TBTs that are yours. Do you anticipate that next week we'll have some people, like?
I do. We find out some finalists, which are very hopeful, so they just are in the process of meeting with Dr. Anamal and finalizing. You know, hopefully they have the position and then they're going beyond.
Wonderful. And Number 6, is that similar to the question that we just had from a Maple Road parent for Paradise Hill? Is that a similar situation there?
Correct. We're still doing final interviews now for that position.
Thank you.
Okay. Ray?
Thank you. Number 28.
Okay.
Looking at the academic support clubs. Does anyone know why there is such a disparity at schools? Like, why some school has 1 staff member, 2 have, or 3 have 2 people, and then one of them has 4? Is it that there's less kids at Westbrook than there is at Brigham League? Is it that there's the same, or it's just too applied, or?
The invitation was offered to all of our staff to each elementary school and these are the staff members who took us up on the opportunity.
But so the hours and the money allocated is the same for each school, so then one school will split it between 4 people and one school will have it for 1 person?
No.
No, per person.
Not for our teachers.
Yeah.
Then I guess my next question is, would we be able to use some of the teachers that applied? Like, what if there's a large need at Westbrook? Would we be able to use these people to do it virtually if maybe they work at a different school? Is that something?
So just to be clear, this is not title money where there's allocations per school. This is local money.
Okay.
So I don't know that, I don't think it'd be a good idea to move teachers, have them servicing students from another building. That might not be the best. We're still going to look for more teachers to volunteer, essentially. But I...
We just, we did get, it's not on this agenda, reflected on this agenda, but we will have an additional teacher from the Marshall Hill School, I'm sorry, Maple Road School for the agenda next week. You know, so that, like I said, we've offered it to all of our staff for, you know, a variety of reasons. Some people couldn't, some could.
Well, it's not volunteer, they're applying for a job because they're paid $100 an hour to run a club after school, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Courtney?
Can you kind of give a little brief explanation of how you would expect these clubs to run? Because it's not our typical club that we usually do. It's going to be focused on academics.
Right, well, we do have, we do have past practice. You know, it is typical for what we've done with title money in the past. So we have a roadmap for, you know, what this looks like. It'll basically run like our title clubs have in the past where our students, the students who participate in the program, they'll be given some time before or after school, depending on the school or teacher's schedule, and they'll be working in areas that they, you know, need support. We identify with our, we have still been, you know, even in the pandemic, we've been using our LinkIt, our Star Strong Assessment, our, you know, classroom data to identify weaknesses and areas of growth for students. And then that's what the teacher goes with. So it's, they'll be customized to those students. It's not a set program, it's going to be, you know, to support where they're at and where they need to be.
And then I just have one more question. Is it going to be open to all the children? Are you going to specify certain children are going to be eligible? Because, like, Westbrook only has 1 teacher, so I can't imagine that we could open it to the whole school for that.
Right, so that's a process that's playing out in these schools now with identifying need and areas of greatest need. And depending on the staff that'll own the building, we'll be able to, be able to address it.
So we're going to support the children who need the most need first based on the staff that you have?
Does anyone else have a question or statement? Ray, did you have something?
Answered.
Okay. Okay, Operations and Finance Workshop Discussion, Mr. Dave? Okay, is there any, oh, second? Is there a second?
No, he wants a second.
Ray? Yeah, okay. All right. Any questions, any discussion?
Can you just explain the educational services again for everybody?
EdData is a consortium, it's a bidding service. So it's a service that all school districts use in the state in order to procure things so that we don't have to go out to individual bid for any of our services or supplies. So they do all of the bidding for us. They have a list of vendors and we utilize their services. Been doing it for you.
So they're doing all the labor work?
Right.
Which would take time and our money otherwise?
Yeah, and, and we would have to, yeah. It would be problematic because there, there's things that we might not know we need. And if we had to go out to bid, then there would be a period of time. You have to put the public notice in, you have to have the bid out for a while and before you get it back. Where if we have a major job and we need something done, we can get one of their vendors that has been approved for time and material. So if we need asbestos removal done or something like that, we use a vendor that they've acquired through their bid process and it's recognized by the state of New Jersey.
Thanks, Barbara.
Okay, Deb?
Number 3, since I was not on the board at the end of December, am I able to vote on Number 3 when it comes up next week or do I have to abstain from that?
It's a ministerial task.
I was just going to say.
I can't hear him.
It said you can vote, you can't, whenever you come in, you can vote on anything with regard to...
Okay.
Right?
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Policy.
I'd like to make a motion to open Number 1 and 2 under Policy for Discussion.
Any questions, any discussion? Okay. Old Business? Ray?
So just from an old business perspective, I think that there are a fair number of us that got emails or information from some of the folks in town with regard to the one-time capital expense and maybe not, and I think there was even an article in the paper. And I don't know that people truly understand what that means, even though I think we've overexplained it now 3 times in our meetings.
Are you referring to the TERF?
And I'm referring to the TERF and, you know, some of the discussion around, you know, Fegos Field and Killgallen Field. But I think that, right, it's just important to bring up that, you know, I think people in town are saying, hey, maybe there are better uses for the money. People in town are saying, hey, can you refund that money back to us? And, you know, Barbara, I know you probably think I'm asking you to sound like a broken record again, but maybe it's just another time for you to explain to everybody.
Okay.
Agreed.
Agreed?
Okay.
I know we've all heard it a number of times, but I think it's good.
Sure, not a problem. Every year, we have an audit of our prior year's budget on June 30th, when the audit was finally, we're in the process of finalizing it. But we will have about $3.8 million in excess money that was not spent from the last budget. Out of, for the current year, we supported this current budget that we're working in right now with about $2.5 million. Out of that 3.8, if we use 2.5 of it, we'll just keep things status quo. If we don't make any changes, if we don't have any increases in expenses, then you would have the same support in revenue that we have currently. So, but we never know from year to year how much money is going to be excess fund balance. Last year was, because of COVID, there was a lot of things that we didn't have. We didn't have substitute teachers, we didn't have custodial overtime for spring sports. We didn't have, we, because the buses were idle, we were able to receive some rebate on our premiums for our buses. We were able to receive a rebate and premium on our student accident policy because there was no spring sports. So there were little things that we're able to achieve that increased the fund balance to a large amount of money. It always makes sense to use excess surplus to fund a one-time expense because you might not have it in the next year. By the same token, if we divvy up that $1.8 million, if we, if we use that $1.8 million to support this year's, the next budget, the '21-'22 budget, and we don't have it next year, the year after '22, '23, you're cutting 1.8 out of the budget before you get started because that revenue is not there.
Right.
So your balance, your budget has expenditures and revenues and the 2 have to be the same amount of money. If I, if we, if the board decides to give 1.8 million back to the taxpayers, then it has to cut, it's going to have to cut the budget in order to achieve that. Plus, next year, you're going to have to make up whatever you cut, plus some additional in order to accept, to reach the increases. So some of the uncertainties we have this year is health insurance and even our liability insurances because the insurance market has gotten very tight. A lot of carriers are again leaving New Jersey because of their exposure. You have cyber liability, you're reading the newspapers where people are getting hacked. School districts are being held to ransom. There's a lot of moving parts to the reasons why our expenditures don't stay fixed from one year to the next. It'd be a wonderful thing if we knew every year that we were going to need X number of dollars. We're also going into collective bargaining with all of our bargaining groups because all the contracts expire on June 30th. So we have to, as a group, decide or try to work something into the budget in order to accommodate any kind of increases that you might give them as of July 1. So in a perfect world, we would have some additional money. We could support what we supported in this year's budget and we have some additional money to do a one-time expense, you know, or a few one-time expenses. Some of the things that we're looking at are, we want to prepare the infrastructure for a new phone system. That's been in the making for a while and I think we're finally at the point where we can narrow down the type of phone system that we're going to need to put in to provide security for all the classrooms and, so, but we have to prepare for it by pulling wire and, and that's going to... And so, but we have to prepare for it by pulling wire, and that's going to be an expense. We have a camera system at the high school, which is, well, it's functional. It's, the cameras are not as good as the, some of the other buildings. So we're looking at possibly improving the camera system. And that's a one-time expense because once you do it, then you're only replacing cameras if they break. You're not really replacing the system. So that's why I, when I talk about a one-time expense, if we're going to buy a new science series, those books are a one-time expense, even though they're part of the general budget. You're buying it usually for a five-year period. So we're trying to balance the regular things that we have to do on a regular basis, your salaries, your benefits, your supplies for the classroom, transportation, you know, buying new buses because our buses have to be replaced on a regular basis. So there's, you're trying to balance that with doing something significant because you don't know whether or not you're going to have the money again to do it next year. So that's kind of it in a nutshell without getting too complicated.
Thanks for explaining again. I think that hopefully that will help with some of the, you know, understanding of what we're doing because people automatically associated those monies only with the potential for adding turf field, which I think is valuable to the town overall and valuable to us as a school system. But there are also other pieces of that which we can use for that one-time expense. So.
Right.
You know, and I know that some have asked about, oh, can we hire more teachers? Or can we hire social workers? Those kinds of things, which would be great to do, but those are an every-year expense, right?
Right, that's an annual expense. If you hire personnel, you don't want to hire personnel this year and then not have the money to support them again next year.
Right.
So it's a balance, trying to provide the academic program that you need for the students and to provide, to keep up the facilities that they need to be in and to bring enhancements to the community because we're, you know, the community uses our fields a lot. And you want to make everything look attractive for new people that are coming in. So you're trying to balance all of these things. It's like wanting to buy a new car, put a new roof on your house, and put siding up and go on vacation. And you're trying to do a little bit of everything. And sometimes you're successful and sometimes you're not quite. And then you decide you need a new car because the transmission went. So it's, there's a lot of moving parts. And you're just trying to, when you have a little bit of extra money, you're trying to do a lot with it because you know that you may not have it again next year. But you know that there's needs in the community and it's going to be beneficial.
Thank you.
Debbie?
Since I'm back on the board again and I missed all the fun from last year, who makes the, I assume the board makes the decision, but is this vetted out in committees? Is it done in, you know, the decision made publicly as, like, how do we, how do we figure out what's, you know, the one we want to go for, the ones we want to go for?
Well, what we, we've opened it up to, we've been talking about a turf field because we wanted the community, we want a feedback from the community. Because a few years ago, when Mr. Reno was still a member of the public and not sitting there, they came to a board meeting and they talked about the condition of our fields and how we needed to do something to support the athletic programs. So we had the turf field up at McCormick Field, but, and we put drainage at Hill Gallin to try to improve that. We put drainage at Munson to try to improve that. But those, I don't want to really say that they're Band-Aids, but they're helping to work without doing a major expense. And they work up to a certain point and then it becomes a problem because it doesn't work so much anymore.
All right, because I remember, and I don't remember how far back in ancient history I'm talking about, but I remember when we had meetings about the phone systems. And that's when Mr. Foodie was on. I don't know if he was, I'm assuming, I think he was president at the time.
So correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't even updated the phones since that time.
We haven't, we haven't updated the phone system. We've been, we're at the point now where it's becoming progressively harder to get pieces for it if it breaks down because it was, from what I understand, it was a used system when it was purchased before my time. So, but there's been a lot of changes to phone systems too because of all the security that now everybody wants to implement in the buildings. So, and like any technology, things are changing too. If we had put a new phone system in eight years ago, we'd probably be talking about finding some way to upgrade it because things have changed so much. So I think that right now, moving forward, because of a lot of other things that we've done and, you know, opening up, you know, our wireless system. And I think that it's probably, right now is a good time to finally take it and do, phase it in. Do the infrastructure one year and do the hardware another year. You know, once you have all the guts in place, once you have the foundation in place, then you could add the actual hardware in order to make the whole thing come together.
So back to my other question, do we discuss this whole process in public? Are we going through committee? Are we doing operation? Is this an operational matter then it's brought to?
I think it's both. I think it's both because in the past, we've always had public discussions of the budget. So once those budget books are given to you in the next week or so and you start going through them, then certainly you're able to talk about anything that's inside of those, either at committee or publicly or with a phone call or an email.
Right.
Because I think you know that I'm as transparent as I possibly could be. And if you ask the questions, I'm willing to give you the information.
And I think that's how that came up in December. We talked to committee about fields and, you know, is there an opportunity to use that money for turf? And then we brought it up, yeah, as new business back in December to kind of have the public here and then, you know, hear some of the things from them, so.
So does the public understand that we are not looking at a turf field at this point?
No, so I think we are.
But we were.
I don't think that that's not off the table, right? Well, now, in, I think in the operations, that wasn't, that wasn't off the table. I think that there, I think what the public needs to understand is that's not the only piece, right? There are other things that we're looking at. And that's not the only thing that we're looking at. So I'm, like, I've brought up, we have schools that probably need to see bathrooms, like, refurbished. And brought up from, you know, 1968 into 19, I'm sorry, 2020. I think there's opportunity in some of our schools for those things. I know some people from the public, even though we did the ESIP, they brought up like the heating system and can you do things there? And I think that, like, we all understand that that's not just, you know, that's not $1.8. That's tens of millions of dollars that potentially of a cost.
But I think it's important for the public to understand the fact that we have just gone through an energy program and all of the, except for the English wing at the high school, which we are going to get taken care of in the next week or so. Because I finally got a price. Everything is working. I mean, we've replaced boilers. We've replaced valves on unit ventilators. Things are hooked to the, a building management system now so that they could make corrections remotely and monitor the systems remotely. The ESIP that we did, the energy savings program that we implemented in the last year, has gone a long way in making the buildings good. I mean, we have heat. We have air conditioning. We added heat and air conditioning to the auditorium at McFinn School. So you have another venue. Once this pandemic is behind us, you have another venue that's going to be climate controlled for any outside organizations or even the school to use for different things. So we've done a lot in the last year. And the timing, if anything, the timing was good because with COVID and this building's being vacant, the contractors were able to work during the day and got a lot of things done so that we were in really good shape. When September came around, it was time for the kids to come back to school. So while, we'll never be able to rip out the mechanical systems and put in filter, filtering systems that, you know, but the technology again changes and you might be able to do some kind of additional ultraviolet things that can purify air if needed. So there's constant things that we're looking at in order to make things better within the buildings and safer for the students and the staff. It just can't be done all at once.
Right, exactly.
Any other questions? Any discussions? And motions?
I have something. So Old Business, we've talked a lot about the website. We've talked about communication. We talked about branding, like, where are we with any of that? I don't want to forget those things, and I haven't heard an update on that in a few months.
We can get some for next week. We'll put some together for the whole board.
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious, is there, like, I don't know, is that something that you would have a timeline on? Is it something that's just in discussion? And we, you know, we, I'm just curious what's happening with that.
So I was going to say, we had a tech committee meeting this past Friday, and that was some of our discussion. And I think that come next week in our board meeting, right, we talked about some things with regard to what we're going to do to help promote social media and those kinds of things. So I think that there'll be some more information between now and the regular.
Yeah, well, we'll do it next week. Yeah. Thank you, Kate.
Anything else? Ray?
So just one last thing, this Old Business. And really, I just want to remind people because again, I feel like I've got more emails and messages from people. I just want to remind the public that, to understand that we are a governance board. We're not a management board. And we help in setting the direction and the oversight to serve the community. But basically, at the end of the day, it's up to the administration to manage and run the day-to-day operations of the school district. And we can make suggestions to management and administration, and they can take those suggestions and incorporate them. Sometimes they take those suggestions and mesh them in with some of their own ideas and you come up with something great. And then there are other times where we have suggestions and they go, hey, thanks for the suggestion, but we're moving in a different direction. So understand that we don't, like, we are not running the day-to-day operations. We're counting on the administration team to run the day-to-day operations. And I think sometimes the public doesn't always see how, you know, that is really supposed to work. That's why you get us the agenda. That's, and that agenda, we vote to let you know whether or not we agree with some of those things that we're moving forward with or we disagree with those things, right? I just want to make sure that people.
We also, with both emails, we can't necessarily respond individually. We work as a board and it's not really appropriate for us to individually respond to anybody's emails. So we're not being impolite, rude, ignoring. It's just, that's not how the process works.
We have an attorney that's sitting here that he advises us regularly that's just saying, you know, you're better off not responding to those things and having, and having the administration do that, right?
Kate, you have something?
Yeah, I have two last things. The first is a question. If a staff member wanted to bring in their own, like, air filter, just like they would bring in their own fan in the spring, are they allowed to bring in an air filter in their office or their classroom?
My guess, it might be a CUSAC violation. I'd have to double check, though. They should probably speak to their principal, and he or she could speak to me. But I know technically fans are a CUSAC violation as well. So we typically front on that.
I just know other districts have purchased, like, some, you know, I have one in my office that were, you know, so that was shocking to hear that, you know, maybe people were not allowed to bring them or something. So I was curious why. So I did not think of CUSAC. But if you could look into that, because I think, you know, some of my own coworkers have purchased their own air filters. I've been in doctors' offices where they've purchased an air filter. And it just makes some people feel safer and better in their environment, you know? So it's something I was curious about. And we've talked a lot about filtration, and we know, you know, with the ESIP that we're at the best that we can be. But if that helps someone, you know, come to work every day or to do whatever it is that they're doing, I would hope that we are able to allow them that, you know? And I just wanted to mention that. And my very last thing.
I would only say that if someone has some kind of a condition that they would need to bring it to our attention, there's a process and it would be reviewed. If they need some kind of an accommodation, the district would do it. So just letting everybody know that.
You just have 504s, right?
Right.
Is there anything else? Kate, you have another question?
I did have one last thing, which is really just a statement that I'll probably make publicly from now until the end of COVID, which is just, you know, I want to say that making the safest decisions for our staff and students in our community is the most important thing. And I've been hearing a lot of that. And so my statement is just, please, if we could, like, keep the schedule until our teachers could get vaccinated and more people can feel safe and not talk, you know? I'm not sure exactly, there's no timeline for things, but I just want to mention that. I'll probably mention it in Old Business every month until this is done because just feeling safe for the people in our buildings is really most important right now. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, motion to close Old Business? Voice, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, New Business?
Okay, New Business, I just want to, we have only one resolution to vote on tonight. As you know, January every year is school board's appreciation month, school board's recognition month. And just so the public understands, the nine volunteers here on the board are just, they're volunteers. The amount of time they give up every day, week, month, year, committed to this school district and its children, its employees, the parents, taxpayers, it's a ton of hours. What you see here is sort of like the iceberg where, like, 10% is above the water and then 90% is below. So these two-hour meetings or whatever they are, this is just the tip of the iceberg of what you see. I send reports home that I know probably take 30 minutes to read. There's committee meetings, the minutes, there's notes, there's agendas, there's emails, there's phone calls. So the amount of time our board members dedicate to this community, I just want to thank them personally. Their salaries are $0 an hour, so that multiplies out to $0 a year. Times a three-year term, it's still $0. So we do have a small token of appreciation. The board members have it on their desks. You know, feel free to frame it at home or bring it to your office or whatever. So I'd like to read this now. And on behalf of our students.
Okay. Okay, motion to let him read? Anybody? Okay, Ray, second. All right, Dave.
He does the motion, you're right.
So whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2021 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. And whereas the West Milford Board of Education is one of more than 580 local school boards in New Jersey, which sets policies and oversees operations for public school districts. And whereas the West Milford Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students. And whereas New Jersey's local school boards help determine the educational goals for approximately 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. And whereas New Jersey's 5,000 local schools. 5,000 local school board members who receive no remuneration for their services act as advocates for public school students as they work with their administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education, and whereas school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs, and whereas boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school district to the public, and they convey to school administrators the public's expectations for their schools, and whereas New Jersey can take pride in its schools, which rank among the nation's best in key achievement indicators, such as the National Assessment of Educational Progress Scores and the Preparation for College Through Advanced Placement Offerings and SAT Assessments. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the West Milford Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of local school board members throughout New Jersey as a joint community statewide in observing January 2021 as School Board Recognition Month, and be it further resolved that the West Milford Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local boards of education and public school staffs toward the advancement of our children's education.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion, oh, any other new business?
Motion to close new business?
Second. Okay, voice vote? Aye. In favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, public comment once again. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the West Milford School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that the members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comment made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. I understand that we have Mr. Michael Lombardi.
Hello. Good evening, my name is Michael Lombardi, that's L-O-M-B-A-R-D-I, and I'm a resident of Newfoundland in West Milford Township and reside at 11 Meadowview Court. I have three sons, two of which are still in school here, one in high school and the other at PK. My oldest is a freshman at Marywood University and attended West Milford Schools, and besides being students, they are all West Milford athletes. So, I come before you today to address the current proposal to turf either Daigos or Kilgallen. First off, please let me say I'm grateful this conversation is even on the table and the discussions are happening. If there is one thing we need in West Milford, it's more usable, presentable fields. We are a unique community with an abundance of outdoor space and have the ability to raise the bar on the perception of West Milford and for our children. Also, let me note, for the first time, I feel the mayor, the board of Ed, and the town council are really working towards improving the town for our kids, and I thank you each for that. As far as my background, I have been involved in the sports programs in town from baseball to soccer, and have been a board member on the West Milford Little League for over 10 years. Being involved in the sports and travel baseball programs, I can tell you that one thing this town lacks is adequate sports facilities. When you consider the fields for West Milford Little League, just let us take a look. Munson, much better than, much better since the work has been done, but there's no lights. Howard, at this point, Howard is almost unplayable. Clay is shot, there's rocks, and the outfield is patches of grass that makes the ball take some wild hops and could cause injuries, but it does have lights. Oberer, which is just opposite of Howard, is barely even usable, but with a few more light poles, could be fixed up and usable for night play, which would make that entire top part of Westbrook out here playable. Echo still needs work and has no lights. It has dugouts that men's softball built, but there are rocks in the outfield. Sandcap, which is basically untouchable because the county took it back for at least West Milford Little League, but then let's talk about Hillcrest. That is supported solely by West Milford Little League, which we have spent tens of thousands of dollars to rebuild and maintain over the past 10 years, and it's our only shining star for baseball. It has lights, scoreboard, refurbished press box, new sound system, pavers put in the dugout area, and teams actually like to come play us at Hillcrest because it is so nice and maintained. It's much different from when I ran my oldest son's first travel baseball team, where towns didn't want to come to play us at our fields, and we actually chose to play at their fields most of the time. So, I do appreciate the fact that discussion is happening, and although the idea of having one large turf complex seems like a great idea, a great idea, I would like the board to consider some of the reasons why I think Kilgallen should be the field. There are no lights at Daigos, Kilgallen has lights, which allows use for 24/7, 365 days a year. The turf allows teams to start practicing on a field when you're allowed to, instead of practicing in a gym and not being able to play on a, play a home game because the field is too wet. There's not enough parking at Daigos, Kilgallen has enough parking to support the entire complex. There is no true base field, not a baseball field, but a base field, which is a major setback for the sports programs for our children. Kilgallen is our home varsity field that can also support soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, just to name a few, and that's 24/7, 365 days a year. There's no bleachers at Daigos, Kilgallen has bleachers. There's no scoreboard, Kilgallen has a scoreboard. There's no batting cages, Kilgallen has batting cages. There's no press box, Kilgallen has a press box. There's no dugouts, Kilgallen has dugouts. There's a need for a breakaway fence to play baseball. At Daigos, Kilgallen has a stadium field with a fence and a beautiful hill behind home plate, and at Daigos, you'll probably need some type of netting to protect the tennis courts, the school, and the football field, so no one's hurt by a flying random baseball. There's also no snack stand at Daigos that's usable for them, because it's inside the football area, which is run by the band, but yet, there is a snack stand at Kilgallen, which sits up by Westbrook, that just needs some work to get up to par. There's also a playground at Kilgallen, and then if you think about planning for the future, the top of Howard has lights, so why not plan down the road to turf the top of Westbrook to make it a complex? A few more light poles and the entire top would be usable 24/7, 365 days a year. And then just some of the other reasons why Kilgallen would be a better choice. For the past few years, West Milford Little League has worked to align itself with the high school baseball program, thanks to the efforts of Ed D. Robertas, and that is to try to help keep kids in West Milford rather than leave West Milford for other private schools. Some of the things that we've done include a West Milford Little League Night, senior night, the high school baseball program has supported our winter training program and our tryouts, our high school baseball coaches have volunteered their time to help coach in the fall for the travel Bears program, and West Milford Little League has supported the scholarship program over the years with the qualifier of play, of play for West Milford Little League and played for West Milford High School. Finish, can I finish my last sentence? I tell you all this because I truly believe that if you build a better facility that has multiple uses, that has the infrastructure already to improve our field issue, the baseball program, you will keep more kids in West Milford as scholars and athletes at the most cost-effective way. If you decide not to build a turf field, please consider improving the fields and maintaining the fields that we do have, and most importantly, Kilgallen. So, I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else?
While you're waiting, I just want to tell you, I missed something in new business that I want to read after the next speaker, if that's okay, can I be a public speaker? Thank you. Sorry.
All right, my name's Ed D. Robertas, 24 Cross Oak Lane, West Milford. Anything else you guys got to know?
That's good.
Your blood type.
So, I'm not going to repeat a lot of stuff Mike said, because I truly believe in a lot of what he said, but first of all, I want to thank you guys. Take baseball out of sight, but school's been going great for our kids and truly appreciate what you guys are doing. Really glad kids are going at least one to two, two to three days a week, and that's just outside of what I'm going to talk about, so thank you very much for that. Thanks again also for entertaining the fact that West Milford does need some new fields. I've been in West Milford since seven, actually started school here, stayed in West Milford, played baseball since seven, since I was seven years old, played on probably every single field that Mike mentioned. The fields are the same exact fields from when I grew up, and that was, I guess, about 40 years ago, right? Without aging myself. I was lucky enough to play on the '89 team that went to state championship, playing on Kilgallen, same exact field, same exact clay, probably, probably stepped on the same stuff. As I graduated college, moved back to West Milford, my kids got into Little League, which I was very happy. I'm on the West Milford Little League Board, I also run the West Milford Travel Program, and sad to say, when I came back, how bad the fields still were. West Milford is so far behind in baseball fields. No money ever goes to a baseball field in West Milford unless we pay for it on our own at a Little League. So, over the last, you know, nine, 10 years, it's been pretty sad and disappointing that these kids have to play on these fields. Like, Mike said, we're close with Joe Jordan on Little League Night. How great would it be if these 300 kids are up on the field looking down on Kilgallen saying, I want to play there one day? Right now, they don't. We have travel, travel teams come in and play on that field for my older kid. Every single game, you hear the kids making fun of it, the parents, the coaches making fun of our fields. How do you think that makes us feel as parents and the kids feel as kids? So, something's really got to be done with the fields. I know Daigos is being talked about, that's not going to be a varsity field. It just doesn't have everything that Mike mentioned. So, if we really want the kids to stay, I can barely breathe in this, and West Milford, I think it's a really good idea to think about doing Kilgallen, and it's everything that Mike mentioned. You know, everything's there, ready, press box, dugout, scoreboard, backstops, snack stands. I mean, back in the day, that whole hill was cleared with all the trees where fans used to sit up on that hill, it was a great place to watch a baseball game. So, again, thanks for the consideration, but I do truly believe, we lost probably five or six really good baseball players to Pope John this year. I do truly believe if we take some of that money, not saying all, I know it has to go to other things, but if we take some of that money and put it towards Kilgallen, I think a lot of you build it, a lot of these kids will stay. So, thanks for the consideration, it's just nice to be talking about possibility of doing baseball fields, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for saying it's hard to breathe in these things, right? Everybody gets a newfound appreciation for teachers. They're talking for six and a half hours through these masks.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. That's okay, I got an email today.
Hi, could you, your judgment misses.
Oh.
Sorry.
No problem. This is so strange. Hi, Kate Romeo, One Carstel Drive, Oak Ridge, New Jersey. I got an email today, this is really for the community, so I'm glad that I am speaking into a microphone. It's beneficial for parents, there's a new program, it's called Parents as Champions Training for parent leaders. The Center for Prevention and Counseling School Health Team would like to invite parents to the 2021 Parents as Champion Training. It's created by the State Parent Advocacy Network and funded by New Jersey Department of Children's Whole School, Whole Community, Whole Child Initiative. The Parents as Championships Training will provide participants the knowledge and confidence needed to build or enhance their leadership role within the school community. It is, it begins on February 4th, it will be four Thursdays in a row from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Every parent who attends all four sessions will earn $125 stipend and will have the opportunity to apply for a $1,000 grant to benefit their school community. Space is limited to 20 parents, so please register today. Oh, my own timer's going off. So, I just wanted to mention that, I think that that's a great opportunity for parents to be part of our school community, to hopefully win a $1,000 grant, and there's only 20 spots. It's open to numerous counties around the state, and Passaic was one of them. Run out of the program in Sussex County, the Center for Prevention and Counseling that's coming into our schools now funded through the municipal alliance to educate our kids. So, I think that's such a great partnership, and I just wanted to mention it. Thank you.
Kate, could you pass that information to me, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have anything for new business? Okay.
Motion to close, second.
All right, we have, I understand we have no executive session, so, motion to adjourn?
I think a motion to adjourn at 8:05.
Very good. Thank you.
Voice vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.